Well, welcome everyone. It's so nice to see such a great crowd and I'll get us started. I will call the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to order Tuesday, October 24th, 2023 at 6:02 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice? Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Piggly Wiggly, and Hometown Ace Hardware. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? Well, you would think with this crowd, you must be a friendly crowd tonight. Okay, mayoral proclamation, domestic violence awareness and prevention month. As you know, domestic violence and prevention is something that we take seriously throughout the state of Wisconsin and especially in Rock County. We have a very active YWCA that works with domestic abuse survivors. And so I have the mayoral proclamation. I won't read it, but I will be signing it to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And we also have part of our council agenda information on the power and control wheel, which discuss the dynamics that take place during domestic violence relationships. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Alright, so this is one of the most exciting things that we get to do and I've only done this as mayor once. Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of a big deal. So we have the swearing in of our new chief, Brandon Saxy. Welcome. And here we go.
If anybody wants to take pictures, you're more than welcome to.
So if you would like raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Brandon Saxy.
Having been appointed as the police chief.
Having been appointed as the police chief.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And just like that. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding bids received for the farmland lease at Crossridge Park.
This was to bid out the 12.5 acres of tillable acreage in Crossridge Park. Two bids were received on October 12th. The high bidder was Paul Hanuska for a amount of $250 per acre. The city administration recommends awarding the Crossridge Park farmland bid to Paul Hanuska for $250 per acre.
Any questions or comments from council?
I would make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright, that contract is taken care of. Alright, presentation by nonprofit 2024 budget requests and is there an order? Do you guys have an order that you prefer? Keaton, would like to go first? Alright, the podium is all yours.
Alright, can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Alright, well, I guess I'm gonna get the nonprofit started out here, so get ready for a good time. Alright. First, I want to introduce myself to those of you who may not know me. My name is Keaton Claus and I'm the executive director at the Milton Historical Society and probably more commonly, as you guys know, at the Milton House Museum. So I first want to say thank you to the council for your previous support of not only the museum, but also the other nonprofits in the community and for taking time to listen to our budget requests again this year. I do also want to thank all of my large Milton House contingency that came tonight to support me as well. I really appreciate that, as well as just knowing all of the wonderful support in the community we have for the museum. So thank you for everybody. I do have a PowerPoint over on that TV. I know it's kind of a long shot for all of you guys, so we'll do the best we can. But as we go, most of you in here, I think, know what the Milton House is. But just in case there are people in here who don't, we are the Historical Society for the Milton community and surrounding communities. And we also are the Milton House Museum. The Milton House Museum is an 1844 structure that was built by Joseph Goodrich, who founded the town of Milton. Most famously, it's known as the only certified underground railroad site in the state of Wisconsin that is open to the public. So we do give tours of that year round, but we also do other things at the building. We have an extensive archival resource that covers the Milton community, surrounding communities. And then for the last about two years, we've had the Rock County Genealogical Society in our archives as well. So we have access to their extensive genealogy library. So if you want to do research about almost anything in Milton, some stuff in Rock County, we're the place to do it. We also have a large 3D collection, so archives are mostly like paper pictures, 3D is your physical objects. So we have them stored in our building and we also have a lot of them on display throughout the museum when you take a tour. And then, as you can see in the final picture, we also do different exhibit displays. And we try and change those out about every year or so, so that more of our collection can be seen by the public. So we try and keep those changing. Two pictures that aren't up here, we also have a community room, so the Toma Room, that people can rent out for small occasions like bridal showers, meetings and stuff like that. So that's another thing that we do as well. If you guys have any questions as I go, I don't know if the crowd can ask questions or not, but if you can, feel free to ask questions as we go. So wanted to just touch base a little bit about what we do with our special events at the museum. We hold quite a few over the course of a year and we try and range them from some that you pay for, some that are free, larger, smaller, and we try and hit a lot of different topics. So in May of this year, we actually were able to host a tea party, which was hosted by the Mitchells. It was really fun. We actually did it in the dining area of the Milton House. So it was a really unique experience and hopefully we'll be putting that on again in 2024. May, we have our Civil War Living History Days, which is probably our biggest event. It's a three-day event with the Friday portion being just for the school-aged children. This year, we welcomed about 1,200 schoolkids to the campus on that Friday. And they range from public school to parochial school to homeschoolers. So if any of you were around that day, that is a lot of children in one space for a day. But it was really, really great. And then Saturday and Sunday are free and open to the public, so they can experience living history. September, we have our Twilight Tours, which is always one of our really popular events. You get to go through the museum with the reenactors and get a feel for what it felt like when Joseph was running it as a stagecoach in. This October, we did some different paranormal events, a spiritualism event. December, we'll have our wreath on parade auction again. And then we will have the Christmas Carol happening in December, which is a longstanding tradition at the Milton House. So kind of going off of that a little bit, this is just some numbers about the Milton House Museum and kind of our tourism. So taking school groups, group and school tours, drop-in tours, and then our special events. All of these numbers, a lot of these numbers are estimates, especially for special events, because like Civil War days, there's no way for us to know exactly how many people come to that. But I'm happy to say that we are finally getting back close to pre-COVID numbers. You can see 2019 was kind of our last normal year and then we really dropped off and have been slowly building back up to 2023. The biggest thing this year was this was really the first year that the schools, the public schools, could really come and do full tours with us. So in May, well, April, May, June, we had about 2,500 schoolkids come through the museum and we put our docents through their paces this year. But it was really great to see all those kids back. Our drop-in numbers are really well, are going really well. And then special events, the number's still a little bit lower. We did stop doing one of our bigger events, which was Arts and Crafts, which usually brought a decent amount of numbers to the site, so we didn't do that this year. But basically, this year to date, we've had about, brought about 8,000 people to the City of Milton through a variety of our tours and special events. So one thing that I've been working on since I came on as the director about four years ago and along with my board is the idea that we really needed a strategic plan for the Milton House. We haven't had one for a while. And so over the last year, the board and I have been working a lot to establish a strategic plan, which I'm happy to say we approved at our June board meeting. Our vision for the strategic plan is establishing the Milton House as the premier experiential historical site for civil rights education in Wisconsin. That sounds like a really big vision, but it's one that we're very passionate about and we feel that we are very poised to be able to do that for the Milton House, the community, the state, and even nationally as well. So just a really quick overview of the strategic plan. I'm not going to go into a ton of details. If anyone has more detailed questions, I'd be happy to talk to you one-on-one and go over it a little bit more for you. But basically, as we embark on the strategic framework, the staff and board are poised to build upon the existing strengths and expand the museum's impact in the coming years. By amplifying the unique historical significance of the Milton House Museum, fostering community engagement, and employing innovative educational approaches, the Milton House Museum will solidify its position as the preeminent institution dedicated to civil rights education. Through these efforts, the Milton House will continue to shape people's understanding of history, enrich communities, and contribute to a more informed and inclusive history. Our five goals to do that are enhance value as an educational resource. So we're hoping that we'll be able to develop some curriculum, so when teachers call to set up a tour, we can provide them with curriculum opportunities to prep their students and then expand that experience afterwards as well. And proud to say, happy to say that we have partnered with the School District of Milton. Their teachers are going to be helping us to develop that and then we'll be using the Milton School District kind of as a pilot program with that, with the hope to take it statewide. We really feel that any student K through 12 should touch the Milton House at some point throughout their career. We're the only underground site in the state that's teaching this history and we feel it's very important that kids are learning that. Goal number two is to increase the accessibility to the museum and it kind of ties in with goal number three, which is expand the museum's reach. But this is really looking for virtual opportunities, so a 360 tour, some virtual tours, having maybe a Spanish-speaking tour, variety of tours focusing on different topics. We understand that not everyone can come to the museum physically for a lot of reasons and we want to make sure that people can access us even if they are unable to do that. We also have a goal of hopefully hiring another staff member who can go out into the community, maybe go into the school classrooms if they can't come our way or go to different talks or different organizations and speak. So understanding that we have to get outside our own museum walls as well, instead of just always expecting people to come to us. Goal number four, proactively preserve our physical assets. Obviously, our building takes a lot of maintenance and upkeep and along with our 3D collection as well. So we have different committees who are actively working to make sure that those buildings are preserved. And thankfully, we have some really great companies in the area, like Cullen is going to be helping us with some stuff happening on our building. And so it's really great to have people in the community to support us that way as well. And then goal number five, have long-term financial stability. So in strengthening and increasing our revenue streams, getting a good endowment plan or endowment fund and all that to make sure that into the future, we can have strong financial stability. Because if COVID taught us anything, nothing is guaranteed, including like tours and people coming to see us. So what does this mean for the City of Milton, for Rock County? These are just some high numbers about some economic impact within Rock County. So 2022, so these numbers, I won't get 2023 till 2024, so I'm always a year behind. But in 2022, direct spending by visitors to Rock County was about 270 million, which is about a 14% increase from 2021, which is really exciting to see. Total business sales from tourism is 439 million, which is an 11.8% increase from 2021. And state and local taxes, 28.6 million, which is a 6.8% increase from 2021. So again, a lot of these numbers, as you look at them, they were really strong and then COVID hit and they really dropped and they are coming back and they're coming back strong. And the Milton House wants to ensure that we continue, we being the Milton community, continue to gain on some of that. So we're a really big draw for people to come to the community. And then a lot of my docents and stuff will say as well, we're always, well, where can we eat? Where should we go next? What else should we do? So we kind of act like a default tourism center as well. And so being able to push people out into all of our fabulous businesses and restaurants and other activities that are happening is really important. So the Milton House is not only impacting our own economic, but we're impacting how many people are spending time and hopefully dollars in the Milton community. So traditionally, the funding that we receive from the City of Milton, we use towards our operational costs. So going back to kind of that strategic plan, when we go for fundraising, a lot of that money is going to be specifically asked for certain projects. It's not going to necessarily be able to fund payroll or to keep the lights on. So what we have traditionally used that money for is we do hire summer staff, which are traditionally high school students from the Milton area. Actually have one here today. And this is a really great opportunity. I've been really amazed even, you know, in 2021, when there was that shortage of people looking for jobs, I had to turn students away because I had too many applications. So a lot of them come and they stay for a couple of years, two, three, four, five years, as long as they want to, I'll let them stay. So this is a picture that we try and do a staff field trip each year where we go to another historic site and kind of learn about that and how they run their show. So this year, we visited the Hoard Museum and then you can see the kids, sorry, young people, I call them kids. The young people in their pictures around there. And then the one of us on top of the water tower, we climbed a water tower in Fort Atkinson and I think some of them are still trying to recover from that. So you never know what you're gonna get when you come to work. But what these young people do through this position is they gain customer service, they gain public speaking skills, they learn time management. They're dealing with people of all ages, all socioeconomic backgrounds. My office manager and I joke that we kind of feel like we don't have a job in the summer because they just take over and we're like, do you need help? They're like, no, we're fine, go away. So they're really awesome. And I am constantly pulled out of my office to, by guests, to say like, oh, my tour guide was amazing. I can't believe how professional he is. I can't believe how passionate they are. So not only are they a great face for the Milton House, they are really shining a light on what great kids are coming out of the Milton community. So I joke with the school district that whatever you're doing, please keep doing it because your students are awesome. So this opportunity to fund them and actually get to pay them to come and hang out with us in the summer is really, really important and is really vital. So we typically ask for about 20,000 and that covers the summer staff and then part of our hourly staff that's year-round as well. And that just will allow us, as we move into developing and moving forward for the strategic plan, hopefully our visitorship's going to increase, which means we're going to need more help. And then also, we will be able to take the funding that we get for our strategic plan and put it towards some of those big initiatives, if we can have help from the city to help support our payroll and give these young people in Milton community a really amazing opportunity. So that's kind of my spiel. So again, I wanted to say thank you to the city council for taking the time to listen tonight. Thank you to everyone here who sat through my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I also want to say too, if any of you are new to the community and have not been to the Milton House, please come and see us. Let us know that you're new. We'll be happy to take you through and to help you understand the importance and the significance of what is right here in our backyard. So with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, it looks like the gathering place, it's, I don't know. Thank you for coming, everyone. Thanks for coming and supporting Keaton tonight.
Not offensive at all that you're all leaving when I come out here. It's fine. It's totally fine. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate you. Well, hello, my name's Matt Kinzer. I am new to Milton, new to the gathering place. So first time at a city council meeting, although I've met a few of you and it's great to be here. So my wife and I relocated from Eau Claire, Wisconsin, where we met in the music department at the college there. My wife is a Janesville Craig grad, so we came down here to be closer to family because my kids are old enough that I don't have to house them anymore and so we could move for once in our lives. And it's great to be with you. I grew up in a small town. I grew up in Boscoville, Wisconsin and so small town is where my heart is and where my heart always will be. What you have here in Milton, Wisconsin, is something I, and I've traveled all over the country in a lot of different aspects. This is really special. This town is really special. This city is really special. The Gathering Place is like something I've never seen in my entire life before. The United States is a place that leads in a lot of ways. One of the ways that we do not lead is in the way that we treat and care for and honor our elders. The Gathering Place is a wild exception to that. The way that we honor our elders and take care of our elders there is, I would say, second to none. That's because of the heart and the vision of Marion Allen when she started the Gathering Place and even now, her grandson, who runs the Allen Foundation, who helps us a great deal. For those of you who don't know, and if we get the PowerPoint going, great. If not, you have to come up and visit me and I'll show you it myself. Every single, so we have membership at the Gathering Place. We have over 500 members. When I checked last week, we had nearly 550 members. About 60% of those are from right here in Milton. The other 30 to 40% are from the surrounding areas, especially Janesville. Of those 500 members, around 200 of them actually volunteer as well, whether that's for our events or other community events. And every single month, we have over 100 activities that happen at the Gathering Place. And we really key in on a number of different areas. The first is health and wellness. The way that a lot of seniors end up getting injured to a place that causes them to long hospitals, they are potentially even at the end of their lives, is through a fall. The best way that you can prevent a fall is through physical fitness. And we have, if you come to the Gathering, if you come on a Tuesday morning to Gathering Place and go downtown, you will not be able to make your way through the room because there's so many people exercising down there. And so we do a number of things in the physical fitness area. As I mentioned, I was a music major in college, so the arts are very near and dear to my heart. So we have a number of different programs, everything from a ukulele club to a choir to, we have a drawing group. We have a painting group. We have a stained glass group. Who does that? I had no idea. All these incredible artistic expressions. And then one of the greatest things that we can do for seniors and really the heart of what the Gathering Place is, is we're a place for social interaction. The worst-case scenario and why the Gathering Place was started was to keep seniors from being socially isolated. Marion Allen wanted a place simply for people to come and gather and eat food together. And now here we are, 31 years later, and we're so much beyond that mission, but we're still staying true to the core of that mission, which is just to get people out of their house, engaging with one another, creating friendships. When you get to the stage in life, and I've worked with seniors, a lot of different avenues, when you get to the stage of life, there's parts of life that start happening. Like you start losing friends, you start losing loved ones, you start losing spouses. What better to have to help you through that process of loss than friends who understand you? And that's one of the beautiful things that we have at the Gathering Place. Research overwhelmingly shows the benefits of a senior center specifically in social and health benefits, lower levels of depression, lower stressful levels, and again, just supportive friendships. And as I mentioned previously, like seniors are just an important part of our community that often get lost. There's a great African proverb that says, what the elders see while sitting, the young ones standing on their toes won't see. And I think that's what we gain from our elders. Every time that I go to work, I get an opportunity not to lead, but to learn because there's people who have gone through a lot more than I have in my life. And you better believe when I have the opportunity to sit with Betty or if I have the opportunity to sit with any of our wonderful seniors that come there, I'm going to take it because I know that they have something to offer us. Most of you know that we were able to fund, without taking out a penny of a loan, a million-dollar outdoor venue called the Gathering Greens. Again, this is something, I interact with senior center directors all over the state and I'm thankful to be able to do that. A lot of the conversations that I, the first meeting I ever had, a lot of them were celebrating the patios that they were opening, which I was celebrating with them. And I kept my mouth shut when I know that we have a six-acre outdoor facility that cost a million dollars to build, that the City of Milton, not the Gathering Place, the City of Milton built. This is not the Gathering Place's gathering greens and this is our gathering greens and we truly want that to be the case. And so that has been open now for quite some time, about a year and a half. And we got it running. Thank you. You guys are awesome. That's the outside. We have volunteers who are there every day that make sure that those flowers look like that. They're incredible. This is just some activities going on at the Gathering Place. And then here is probably what you've seen, the initial rendition of the Gathering Greens. This is a summer at one of our concert series. That's the Piper Road Spring Band. They brought out a great crowd and we had six concerts this year and it was just an incredible opportunity. A lot of people don't know that our mission isn't just for seniors, but our mission is for people to just have positive living, period. And so we do a lot of community events. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had Pumpkin Fest and maybe some of you were there, but we had about 120 kids show up. We had about 300 pumpkins that were donated. They decorated those pumpkins. We had about 250 people total. And then we end the event. Our maintenance director, John Bauer, has a pumpkin launcher. It's like a catapult and we aim for a tree and the kids just get to pull the thing and we send little pumpkins hurling out, it's not dangerous at all. I'm sure it's fine. It's totally fine. It should be good. So we just had that. That was wonderful. We've seen this year about 3,000 people come to our free community events. The next one that we have coming up is to honor our veterans of our community. We have a member who donates all of the money to put towards a Veterans Day program. There's a young man by the name of Derek Henze. That's going to be our There's a young man by the name of Derek Kenzie. That's gonna be our keynote speaker on November tenth and you are all welcome to come, but you do have to sign up ahead of time if you want to eat. And uh, so we have that coming up. Um, we used to have a uh, something called Hot Dogs with Santa. I was uncomfortable with the name. That's now Afternoon with Santa, but it is still the same thing for all of you who are wondering. Uh, same great fun that we're going to have. And with The Gathering Greens, what this gives us the opportunity to do is we also rent our space out as a venue. That's something that's very unique for a senior center to be able to do. Um, and so we have weddings, we have celebrations of lives, we have, uh, we had a wedding shower. We have all sorts of, anything you want to do that looks like a party, we'll host you. And the beautiful thing about that is it brings thousands of people to Milton every single year who wouldn't be there without it, much like um, much like the Milton House does and and all these wonderful nonprofits also bring a lot of people to our community. And so we're seeing thousands of people using The Gathering Place as a venue. So that helps us because we're able to fund what we do. And then also it helps the community because they're going out to eat at Milton restaurants. They're uh, they're just engaging in commerce in the Milton area. And this is where this partnership is really great because I don't think that the future of nonprofits will be a future where we're begging for donations all the time, but where nonprofits learn how to fund themselves on some level and also be become a resource to the community on even greater levels. And I think The Gathering Place has managed to do that. And so any investment that the city continues to make in The Gathering Place will come back to the city tenfold and even beyond. And another point that I want to bring up that's very dear and near to my heart is we're really focusing on doing some intergenerational work. Um, I've raised a couple of kids myself and because of some of the work that I've done, whether it's with elderly people, um, people who are living in poverty in the nonprofits that I've worked with, my kids have gotten to to have their eyes opened to worlds that they never would have experienced without that. And so we really want to, at The Gathering Place, create opportunities for intergenerational work to happen. Um, we do great jobs of siloing ourselves in the United States of America where, you know, people who are forty-seven hang out with people in their forties. People who are in their twenties hang out with people their twenties. People who go to senior centers hang out with people their own age and we really want to see that change. Um, one thing we did this summer that was really great is we piloted a grandparents art university where grandparents invited their grandkids to come and create art over a two-day period with them. It's a beautiful opportunity and they created some really wonderful art. But more importantly, they created some really wonderful memories and it was just a lot of fun to watch. Uh, there's a picture of a wedding that happened at our venue, by the way. Um, just beautiful in the summer. That's our grandparents' university right there. We also partner with the school district in Milton. We've partnered with both the middle school and the high school for different programs where their students come to our facility and we help that engagement, that intergenerational engagement happen. And our staff is always creating new opportunities to try to, uh, we want to be innovative. Um, I went to a senior center uh, conference and I was bored out of my mind because The Gathering Place, not because of me, but because of the people who have gone before me. We're doing work that's more innovative than anybody else in the state in the area of senior centers. And I would argue maybe in this, in the whole United States of America, we're doing work that's very innovative and very creative. And so we're continued to push that envelope as much as we can. The thing I'm really surprised about, because here we are in Milton, a very small town. Every time I'm out and about, I run into people and they ask what I do and I tell them and they have no idea what The Gathering Place is and that seems crazy to me. And so one of my big initiatives this year and in the next few years is really to push that envelope, to do a better job with our promotional materials. So this year, we're putting a lot more effort into our social media presence and then we're building a new website. We're also creating, uh, thanks to Marion Allen's grandson, David, we're also creating three promotional videos that will help promote The Gathering Place, The Gathering Place as a wedding venue and The Gathering Place as a venue uh, for other things as well. All of these things are going to help us just create a presence in this community and beyond. Again, creating a great partnership for the people here at Milton. And any money that's given to The Gathering Place from the city will go into those promotional means to try to get more people here to Milton, not just for The Gathering Place, but so that they can experience this really special community that we all have here. And um, I'm just thankful for for everyone. Uh, The Gathering Place only exists because of people that give of their time and their talents. And that's much more than just our small staff. That's all of the the volunteers that that come and help out. Um, we have a hundred percent volunteer staff front desk that give of their time. So generously, um, you know, people like the Open Doors Foundation helping out with our Pumpkin Fest and just the way this community is collaborative is also very unique. And that's a, that's a part of the reason I'm very honored to be here. Um, the other reason I took this job is because it's one of the very few places that you can be nearly fifty years old and everybody calls you the young guy, so. Thank you guys so much for your time. I uh, I look forward to meeting more of you. Please, I have an open door policy. It's very rare where my door to my office is closed. You don't have to make an appointment. You don't have to set up a meeting. Just show up and I'll make time for you and I'll show you around the place. And for heaven's sake, if you know anybody that's getting married, I'm telling you, we're the cheapest venue in town, but we compete because it's one of the most beautiful venues in the area as well. So thank you all so much. Appreciate your time.
Any questions or comments before we let that young man go sit down and rest his fate?
Thanks for coming to our veterans program, by the way. Appreciate you.
Thank you for all the stuff that you're doing with The Gathering Place. It is a wonderful place.
All right, we have uh, one final presentation by Open Doors. This is kind of a fun night um, for all of us to listen to all of the great things going on in the community.
Well, thank you very much uh, for having me. My name is Derek Kenzie. I'm the president uh, of Open Doors and the founder of it. And I also, uh, my purpose here tonight is I'm the chair of the Fourth of July uh, committee that runs the festival and the parade. And it's actually turned into a committee now. Is that just myself, which is brilliant, brilliant stuff. Um, so uh, uh, thank you guys all tonight and uh, we had two great speakers with brilliant PowerPoints. I don't have a PowerPoint, uh, but uh, but it's all up here and I'll illustrate to you guys. So um, so within to that is um, it's been, now this is gonna be my third year of running this festival. And um, uh, the Fourth of July, you know, as we all know, all the mil- mil knights in this room all know that the Fourth of July is the cornerstone event that is kind of the beating heart of this community, uh, within to it. Uh, the Fourth of July is the the time period that class reunions happen. It's the time period that family reunions happen and gatherings happen. Uh, it's purposeful that people live on Madison Avenue um, for the parade. So uh, this is a great honor to have the privilege to help run the Fourth of July Festival and I don't take that lightly. So when I was asked to do it, um, I wanted to make everybody proud and do it good, uh, to the best of my ability. When I first took it over, the truth of the matter, and we all know this, it was a dying festival. That was the truth of the matter. To the point where when I was trying to call carnivals to come, no one would accept my call because you're, oh, you're from Milton? Click. They didn't want to waste their time. That's where we're at. Well, you guys invested into me and you trusted me with what we're doing and now I get to brag. We are now, in that quick couple of years, have turned into now one of the top three largest Fourth of July festivals in the state of Wisconsin, if not the surrounding states. We know that by the numbers. I get reports from the carnival guy. He's been in business for thirty years. This last year was his lifetime record as a carnival person. Lifetime record. We had so many people at the Fourth of July, the day of the Fourth, it overloaded the cell phone towers and everybody's phones went to SOS mode. Almost made it problematic to start the fireworks show because I had to call the radio station. I almost had to run into under Rainbow Drive to get a landline to get the fireworks going. Thankfully, uh, the fireworks guys are always prepared and they had satellite phone. Sounds good. So in a few short years, we've been able to build this from a dying festival to this tremendous, great thing that I'm super proud of. The thing that um, uh, communities around are are paying attention to and are watching and they're going, what is going on over there? Why can't we be like them? And that was all the comments I see on Facebook. So um, so tremendous success, uh, but not perfect. Still room to grow. Still room to grow correctly and not in size. So don't worry.
Right, you're scaring our new police.
So um, I do not want to be an arts armory fest. That is not the vision. Um, the the capacity that we experienced last year is the capacity that I envisioned. Uh, I see maybe a little bit more growth, um, but uh, but what we have is uh, is good growth. But it's a balancing act of sustaining a vision and i- it's a um, when you have something like this, what happens is it's a synergy uh, together. So when there's something great happening, it actually attracts other greatness. People are coming to me wanting to be part of this committee. Businesses are coming to me wanting to be uh, sponsoring this event. So greatness attracts greatness and that's what we're seeing. But it's that balancing act to let it spiral out of control into something too big, unmanageable, and it crashes on itself. So purposely and diligently, I'm very methodical in how I plan this and how I grow this within to there. So I want you guys to know that. So we're already working on next year. And we're gonna be uh, I don't know if you guys saw the soundstage, the greatness of that big soundstage we have now. I don't know if you guys seen all the activities, non-stop packed. We're bringing all these sports back. We had softball that one year. We brought back the three and three basketball this last year. And this next year, we're even trying to bring uh, a volleyball tournament into play as well. To fully utilize the, all the things that Park offers, as well some local kickball and stuff like that. So a bunch of fun stuff to come, uh, so with with all, with everything we're doing. So thank you guys for supporting me so much of the years and putting your trust and belief in me. And uh, and now I get to say us because I do have a great, great committee of people and all of this stuff. One thing I do want to mention is this, is the requests of money that I ask has increased and that was not necessarily planned, uh, within to it. So when I started off, you know, this festival, um, the budget, uh, it it costs about sixty to eighty thousand dollars, give or take, for the fireworks and the bands and all the stuff that we do. And when I first started, I was uh, received twenty-five hundred dollars from the city. And I respectfully requested a raise at the five thousand to make it more sustainable where I could maybe do something besides just buy the ice. And you guys granted me that and I'm very grateful. Now this year, um, I'm asking for seventy-five hundred. And it's not to add more. It's actually, we're gonna have less. And that's because unfortunately, as a lot of people are aware with the school district, is the new charges and fees for grounds. And it's gonna cost me four or five thousand dollars just to have it there. Thousand dollars a day. A thousand dollars a day. So just even have it there wipes out the entire budget that you uh, would be normally giving me. And that's why I asked for seventy-five hundred, not so I have more money to work with, that's why I've actually the same money I work with, within to that. So um, that's an ask of increase and um, uh, I want you guys to understand why. So uh, that's all I have for you tonight, um, and uh, if I open up to any questions. Very much.
Thank you very much. To everyone.
All right, so we can move on to the next portion of our meeting. I want to thank everyone for coming and supporting the nonprofits. We appreciate your supporting them. So number ten, presentation discussion and direction regarding the two thousand twenty-four annual budget preparation. Be prepared for team building. That's all I gotta say. Probably didn't know about the Fourth of July either, so.
All right, tonight we are doing a quick update since last meeting. So we're just going through any changes that might have happened since we met last. Um, I did leave the budget constructs um, slide here in the presentation. I think it's important just to highlight how the budget is built. Um, we have our two caps in place, the expenditure restraint, and that's how much we can spend, and the levy limits, which is how much we can tax. Our net new construction this year is at six point two six nine percent. And just as comparison, this year Rock County's average is two point one four percent. Um, and then we have our state aid, which really, they all sort of evened each other out this year. There were no big changes, one way or the other. And then we have the new supplemental municipality aid. And those details here, um, Act Twelve was passed over the summer for this upcoming budget year, two thousand twenty-four. It provides a supplemental payment that may be used for law enforcement, fire protection and public works. We have been granted one hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And currently in the budget, we have it split between an increased capital, increased contingency. This year, we cannot take the CPI plus two exemption for the fire contribution, so we're using part of that for that. And then the remainder is going to um, uh, the public safety and DPW wage increases that are across the board, a five percent increase, a share for everyone. As of today, what that all means, I think the big thing to note in this one is we still need to reduce our budget today by ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars in order to meet levy limits and adopt a budget um, towards the end of November. When I presented on October third, two thousand twenty-three, there was a deficit in the budget of sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Today, it's at the ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. And these are the changes that have happened since that time. Um, the first line, we received our final fire budget allocation. And as you can see, by the bottom line, we took that out of additional contingency so that it wiped and didn't affect the budget and stayed neutral. Um, next, we received our final property insurance, um, that estimate and that is going up slightly. A new item since last time we spoke. The Tourism Commission has requested an additional five hundred dollars to be added into their budget. They are looking to use it towards new printed brochures that advertise our community and everything that's happening within the community. And the request um, from us would be matched in full by the chamber as well. Since the last discussion, the approved administrator salary went through and so that um, helped reduce our deficit and then the adjustment to contingency for fire. Capital items have not changed since we last talked. It's still, um, we have an increase in capital this year of around eighty-four thousand due to that supplemental municipality aid. Um, all items have stayed the same on there. And then there's still just a couple of things that um, were requested for equipment that are not currently in the budget. And on the right side, we have our wheel tax amount, which is gonna go towards preventative maintenance and pavement repairs this year. And then we also have an assessment fund to help um, repair sidewalks throughout the year. The nonprofits presented tonight, so I did leave this in here. The first, probably three quarters of the graph show what we've actually funded from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three. And then currently, what's in the budget in two thousand twenty-four and then what their actual request was. So if there's any discussion or direction and changes for that tonight, we can discuss that. But it is, we're keeping them, currently the budget is set to keep it consistent with what we've given in years past. Um, as of tonight, we have many boxes checked, a balanced budget. We're qualifying for the expenditure restraint. We're not having any reduction in service and no new levy-supported borrowing. We do however need to reduce the budget still to be within our. We do however need to reduce the budget still to be within our levy limits. And then just main takeaways, like I said, we're maintaining service levels. We'll be compensating all employees with the same five percent increase across the board. Um, that's, it normally has been at three. We've set that to five to help offset higher insurance premiums that we'll be seeing in twenty twenty-four. Um, will be, we have increased capital and infrastructure funding because of that supplemental municipality aid. Um, the same expenditure restraint qualify, levy limits, we don't. And then um, there will be no new tax. Levy-supported borrowing and then a big addition, right now, based on this budget today. Um, the city of Milton will see a tax rate increase of about thirty-six cents. And there's an example on there, if there's a house valued at two hundred thousand dollars, that'd be about a seventy-two dollar increase for the city of Milton. We don't have the other three jurisdictions in yet to see what their pieces of the puzzle end up being. Um, so after tonight, we're looking at a public hearing on November seventh. Um, we hope to have a levy limit qualifying budget at that point. And we are looking for approval of a budget on November twenty-first.
Are there any other numbers or anything else outstanding?
No, we have everything in that affects the budget, so.
Any questions or, and you don't have to make any decisions tonight. This is just a status of where we're at.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. I've been, I've been involved with seller budgets for my, my career in different communities. I want you to be known that this presentation is very professional and very well done, which I have not seen that well in my career. So I wanted to pass it on to the council and also to Kelsey.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts you have, you have time to think about?
So you don't want us to, you don't want us to actually, you want us to think about this for the next meeting?
Yeah, we actually, so our, how our process works is we have a public hearing to get feedback from the public prior to passing the budget. So this is your time to be thoughtful. Anything else for anyone? Thank you very much, Kelsey. You know, my screen just went blank. Okay. I have to scroll up a little. Discussion and possible action regarding an engineering contract from Baderman for design engineering services for the WISDOT project ID thirty-six twenty dash twenty dash ten forward slash eleven forward slash twelve.
You can thank um, WISDOT for those numbers. Um, so this is the uh, High Street um, payment replacement project. It's the project that we applied for STP funding. Um, there's additional funding provided by the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, we applied through the MPO and were granted um, I think it was around nine hundred thousand, a million dollars. This work order from Baderman is to do the design services um, for the project so that uh, the project can be built. Uh, there's several reports and um, they'll be doing the design per other WISDOT standards. Their total fee is a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, the fee is entirely funded with local dollars. Some of that fee is also um, related to utility work. So we recommend approving the engineering design contract with Baderman for WISDOT project and all those numbers.
So this is the, the paving of High Street?
Yes, that will take place in twenty twenty-six between Janesville Street and John Paul Road.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments for Mark? Turn your mic on.
Is that on?
It is.
Okay, here we go. Um, the question related to the scope of work and, you know, I think we go ahead with this, no problem with, with that. Uh, in terms of the scope of work, it, it looked as if um, looking at the intersection of a High Street and John Paul, um, a little bit more is, is sort of part of that scope.
Yeah, so there's an intersection control evaluation, um, just to determine what, what if anything would be recommended for that intersection. Um, depending on the outcome of that, that evaluation, uh, the project could change or the limits could change or the scope of work for the actual construction could change.
Okay, uh, thank you.
That's kind of a problematic intersection. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the engineering design contract with Baderman for WISDOT project three six two O dash zero zero dash ten slash eleven slash twelve East High Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll take it to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, Chair, I'd like to make another comment on this.
Yes.
I've been involved with all our MPOs throughout my state, my career, and I participated in Janesville, I call it Janesville MPO, which Milton is involved in. And trying to have projects like this being approved through MPO takes a lot of time and effort. And I wanted to let you know that Mark has spent time at the, uh, the technical committee and I was also on with the MPO meeting this week. I think I want to let you know that I think it's very imperative that have Mark being involved with the MPO has been very beneficial for Milton. And I think these projects will be forthcoming in the future, so his participation is very positive for your community.
Thank you. And thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright, so item number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding the replacement of the roof at Lamar Park Pavilion.
So this is the uh, pavilion located just north of the uh, baseball diamonds at Lamar Park. Um, in the twenty twenty-three budget, there was funding allocated for improvements on the pavilion. Staff has obtained three quotes for the work. Um, the lowest quote was provided by Monumental Contracting LLC in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, it's below the um, approved uh, budgeted amount. So uh, city administration recommends approving Monumental Contracting LLC to replace the roof on the Lamar Park Pavilion.
Any discussion or?
Um, and then so that's uh, would also be subject to um, publication of a class one notice because it's over five thousand dollars.
I did notice they sent the estimate uh, to us in care of the Milton School District. Let's hope they sent the bill the same way.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Excuse me. In your memo here, you're giving us the, this is the lowest quote that we have. Where's this money coming from? And I'll, I'll just ask them all at once. Um, where's the money coming from? Because this is a pavilion and the upgrades are something that's probably been needed for the last thirty years. Did the Parks Commission look at any type of a new design? Is the roof gonna be metal or did you look at solar? And I'll let you answer.
Uh, we did not look at solar. The quotes are for asphalt shingles. The Parks Committee did review um, the project um, or the pavilion and discussed some paint colors, cause painting is another part of the um, funding request that was approved in the twenty twenty-three budget. So there's funds allocated already for the project in the twenty twenty-three budget.
So then my next question is, why do we have these funds allocated in the twenty twenty-three budget when the dog park actually has twelve thousand six hundred eighteen dollars in it and the park fund has a hundred forty-five thousand plus? Um, I'm just kind of wondering, um, and we're probably just at this point in the city, and Mark, I know that you'll stop me if I'm going too far with this. But we need to decide exactly who is responsible for the parks in this type of a situation. If the city, if we're, if we as, as the city are financing these repairs, who builds the, who builds the new pavilion that we'll eventually have at Crossridge? Is that the city building that? Or is it gonna come out of our park funds? Because these are things that we need to look at. And I, I, I know that bringing up Crossridge just makes everybody think, oh, well, we're waiting for this development and that. But, you know, that pavilion will eventually need repairs too. So the question would be, is the city covering this or is this coming from our parks funds? I just feel like we kind of probably should talk about it.
Um, I guess in response to why the funding was allocated through the twenty twenty-three budget, it was included as a budget request that was approved by the council um, in the budget. Uh, whether or not the funding should come from the Parks Fund or Dog Park, again, that direction would need to come from the council, possibly through the Parks and Recreation Commission. So if that's uh, something you'd like to consider, I think it's, you know, we, we could do that, but it would just take further discussion um, for the project.
Uh, based on your budgetary process, it wasn't in a, in a process right now, you, I think you need to go forward with this one. And if you're looking at future development in certain areas, you need to, you need to go through a process with the Parks Committee. They may have recommendations of what funding they should use. And, and I think at this point in time, you need to act on this one. And then that discussion is the next item for the Parks Commission, Plank, Parks Commission.
And, and I'm certainly all right with that. It's just that we also just learned that we have a deficit of our park, of our budget for twenty twenty-four. And so I've just been looking around, trying to figure out where we can shift things around so that we can still have our twenty-four budget as we have it. And then these questions about the park maintenance and these things, I, I really just think that we do need to, we need to address it as a council. So um, do you wanna go back and look at solar design? Is it worth it? I'm just thinking long range. That's, you know, you guys all know me. I'm always thinking out twenty years. Do we need to think about that kind of replacement? Because that's exactly what we're talking about with all of our buildings, solar.
I can answer a little bit for you. There we have a study that's gonna be coming to the council about energy, energy uh, efficiencies and energy study that has been put together. It's gonna be coming at, and I think maybe the next meeting, the report of uh, from all our buildings, et cetera. And if solar is something that again, the building, excuse me, city council wants to pursue or look at, it, it'd be a point in time to start looking at your next project or your next facility. Because if you're, if you're gonna look, this one's already been bid, I'm pretty sure. And then this one did not have that in specifications. And furthermore, I know very much about solar. You would end up pushing a budget, what he has right now, beyond because solar is not that cheap to, I point to install initially. But it does have its benefits. And the main thing about solar is that when you have it, you, you gotta have it, basically have the, the area that you're at where it can generate electricity to, in that location too. So that's, you have a lot of ideas. But I think basically you need to start putting them in the planning process with the, with the buildings, facilities. And that report that's coming on an energy report will, will give you a lot of direction that I've seen a draft. And I think I'd be very, you'd be pleased to see what the recommendations are.
Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the Monumental Contracting LLC in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding maintenance to the screening and wash press equipment at the wastewater treatment plant.
Uh, so this is for uh, rehabilitation of our screening equipment. Um, it's the first process at the wastewater treatment facility. It removes large items and rags and other debris that could get uh, into the processes down the, down the line at the plant and cause damage to other equipment. Um, we, staff has obtained three quotes, again, um, for the work. The lowest quote was provided by Sable Mechanical out of Fond du Lac in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-nine forty-four dollars. The work will be funded by the wastewater utility. Um, so city administration is recommending approval of the quote from Sable Mechanical.
Okay, um, is there any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Sable Mechanical LLC performing the screen wash and wash press overhaul.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fourteen, general items. We'll start with committee reports. If anybody has a committee report from something that's happened since our last committee report.
His store preservation, we're starting working on it's twenty twenty-four work plan, at least put it together.
Thank you.
Just with regard to the gathering place, uh, Matt and I had talked about, some issues that Linda had brought up last time, ensuring that we make sure everyone knows about different activities going on and uh, keeping everyone involved in understanding those. And so Matt will be ensuring that the monthly newsletters go out to everyone. But also be aware that all of those dates and activities are posted on the website.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't know whether this qualifies as committee report, but uh, the Milton Milton Township Fire Commission is going to be meeting. There still is business to be transacted, uh, that is sort of carryover business. Uh, so the the entity and the accounts have not been closed out yet, uh, but we're approaching the end anyway. Uh, that, that will happen on uh, Wednesday, November fifteenth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So we'll move on to staff reports. Who wants to start with staff reports?
I'll start off for you as time.
Okay.
I, the things that I want to let you know, we'll have later on, and I think in the closed session, is that I've been reviewing and ma- and managed the Public Works Department's wage analysis. So as a part of that, and I wanted you to be aware that's gonna be discussed later, but it was a process I worked on. And I'm also reviewing the PUD application and the documentation for a public hearing, be, potentially be set for November seventh for the phase one of the Glacier Ridge development. Um, that is a very extensive process. And the documents are in place and I'll be working with Mark, Employee Works Director, in putting those documents together so we can have it available hopefully for, not hopefully, we have to have it together for November seventh. And then I'll be come to city council for final approval. The other one is I want you to be aware of the partnership with uh, GNC in the city, but we're working on applications for the T-grants for the rail and Vicman, Vicarman Road reconstruction. Um, you've done those in the past for crossing quality accordings. And we're losing that process as a template, but we have much involvement with eventually the city council have to deal with uh, two resolutions to supporting that in that application process. So it is the process that is being done with the city staff and also GNC staff. I expect that to be started now. And I'm pretty sure it may be in the process of, depending on timing, coming to the council with Paul in December.
Okay, thank you. Kelsey, do you have anything else to add? You did a wonderful job before, so.
Thanks. No, I think I'm good tonight.
Thank you. Mark?
I don't have much to add tonight.
Jenny?
Well, I'm excited to say that our recruitments are complete now. So we have our new police chief and then Paul Hen- So we have our new police chief, and then Paul Henj is starting on, uh, November 20th. So, or at least for staff side, we're excited about that. Uh, but otherwise, that is all that I have for this evening.
Library, what do we got?
Um, staff will be receiving the Programming Innovation Award on Thursday for our little L Y Z L reading program at the Wisconsin Library Association Conference. So it's very exciting. And then our Friends of the Milton Public Library book sale starts next Wednesday. Wednesday and Thursday will be friends only, then it'll open up to the public for the rest of the month.
Thank you. Chief or? Chief, no, no, there's just one chief.
Too late to change my mind. Um, so the, one more final reminder, the Saturday is the PTSD 911 documentary screening. Black Hawk Technical College film starts at 11:00. It's too late to get your free lunch if you didn't register yet, but the doors will still be open. It's a free event, so hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. And with, uh, respect to the accreditation, if I read correctly, Chief Justice, or Justice, Officer Justice, Detective Justice was instrumental.
Yeah, Ryan Justice, um, ever since my arrival, has, um, done dual things. He's our detective, but he is also our accreditation manager. And it's really important when you have an organization involved in accreditation that there's a point person that kind of takes it on and shepherds the department through the process. He's done a very good job of that. Um, one of Chief Saxi's primary, um, responsibilities coming forward is figuring out how to replace him because he also has a retirement horizon that he's looking at. So, um, we'll be, um, they will be working on that over the next three years. So Ryan can start mentoring somebody to do the next one in six years. Um, because this is a process the department will continue to do.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, Chief Pickering, do you wanna share anything from these numbers we have in front of us?
Not only some of the numbers, but just some of the background on some of the things that are going on. Uh, and I don't mean to keep you very long this evening, you've had a long night already. Um, everybody has got a copy of the report. Anybody in the audience there on the, the back table back there? Um, 6.7% year over year more activity than last. Last year was 10.7 over the, I mean, you guys get all this, right? It just continues to be very, very busy. But I will tell you what we've done. We collectively, the municipalities and the district over the last, um, now nine months, um, we are keeping up with it. And, and I, I say every time I'm in front of a elected body, you have no idea how far ahead of the game you were. Um, there are several municipalities around us that are just starting to get hit with a brick on the side of their head um, over being behind the eight ball. So again, a compliment to everybody. City of Milton itself, response time, we have 53 incidents during the month, 384 for the year. Um, you represent about 60% of the Eastern Division. So if you wanna, you know, point a reference in terms of your, your activity level within the Eastern, um, represent about 30%, 27%, but about 30% of the district overall. Um, so you are a, a, a pretty busy municipality. Um, fire inspection activities, I, I know many of you know Jeremy very, very well. He is doing just a phenomenal job. We have never been at 87% of all inspections at this point in the year. Um, there was a year, a few years ago, we were actually calling somebody on New Year's Eve to get a, an inspection done. Uh, so he's done a phenomenal job. So if you run across Jeremy, you can congratulate him. Staffing, we are at full staff. Um, we have two over hires. Um, again, the city of Milton and town of Milton help make those possible, so I wanna thank you for that. Um, we had two more of our individuals that are part of our Grow Our Own program, uh, complete their national registry as paramedics. That is a 15, 16, 100 hour, uh, commitment over about a nine-month period. So the word grueling comes to mind. Um, so, um, Maya Mizlanca, who is on, from the Western Division, and, uh, Tali Hord, uh, who was a member of the Eastern Division when they came on board. So, um, just really, really proud of them. Brings us up to 19 paramedics and two critical care paramedics, so 21 paramedics on staff, which is, um, really, really good. On the backside, normally all I say is look at the lower right-hand corner and see if that block is red or green. Uh, um, I too will add my thanks to Kelsey and all the work that she has done to help us get through the integration. As Bill mentioned, we've got some cleanup things that we're gonna be taking care of here, but we really are getting down to kind of the bottom of the list. Um, where we stand from a budget standpoint, all of our municipalities got the preliminary budget. Notice I slipped the word preliminary in there. Don't panic, Kelsey. Um, but what we do, everything we do is driven by equalized values within the municipalities. And within some of our municipalities, we're split. I'll just use Town of Lima as an example. We are 52% of the Town of Lima. Whitewater Fire is the other 48%. So we send all the numbers out to all the municipalities, and the clerks or the finance directors have to validate that we're using the right number. We, we put it on the municipalities back to validate the number. Um, we have found two, um, mistakes that were made. One of them will affect the Eastern Division, one of them will affect the West. Um, and it's in those split municipalities as to where the growth happened within their municipality. Um, there is a slight shift, um, but I think I have a way not to add to the problem, your $10,000 problem you heard earlier. Uh, but just understand that's, we're in the validation process right now. We'll have that done by the end of this week, and I'll be working with the finance directors. Um, I, I'll take green anytime I can get it on a base of $2.5 million. We are $685 to the good. So we're doing well. And the way our budget works, um, a majority of our fixed costs happen earlier in the year. Um, our insurance payments, our workers' compensation payments, um, our DOT vehicle inspections, all the pump testing, all of those big expenses that are one-time expenses, those all happen earlier in the year. So we usually do, if we're going into the fourth quarter in the green, we're in good shape, right? Cause it just basically means expenses will come down over the next three months and as revenue stays. So we're, we're healthy from a finance. Um, major activities, uh, only thing was a, a garage fire in the Town of Milton. Uh, crews did a phenomenal job. The garage was only four feet away from the house, uh, and it was fully engulfed when we pulled up. So of course, the goal is keep it from getting to the house, and that is exactly what they did. They did a really, really nice job on that one. Um, a lot of things going on. You can kind of read some of them, the, the fire station design symposiums that was down in South Carolina. There's two national conferences every year. Um, the station designs, for those who haven't sat in on any of those meetings, um, Linda's been in, I think every one of them, Teresa's been in just about every one of them. They are looking really, really good. We are pretty much at, um, final schematic designs on all four of the facilities. The one thing, and Mark, I'll follow up with you, um, the Milton West facility, um, potentially fronting on High Street in the area you were talking about with the federal or the DOT. Um, we gotta make sure they take into account, um, potentially the shift in the drainage, um, that we gotta figure out. That's gonna be a little entertaining, so. I've commented a couple of times, this one kind of grabs your heart if you listen to her testimony. Julianne, uh, Juliana Lindzen, our division chief of EMS. Um, she testified in front of the legislature on the Safe Haven baby box legislation and trying to get that changed in the state right now. As you know, there's a problem at the state level with that. Um, you wa- you read her testimony, and she, she does the facts really well and, and all the things. And obviously, in this area, we had the one event, uh, thank heavens not in our district, but just outside of our district, that, that turned out to be very, very, uh, tragic. Um, you get to the end of her testimony, and that's where she's got you by the heartstrings. Um, she is talking about this from a very personal perspective. She and her, um, twin brother were abandoned at birth. Um, so when she talks to the legislators about the decision that her mother made to give them up in some way versus putting them in a dumpster, um, is, is quite compelling. And, and so when she talks about this and kind of the reason behind her passion, uh, this means something to her, uh, in a very, very deep and personal way. So she's really working with that. And I've been in contact with most, well, all of our legislators and several legislators around the state trying to work on it, so. We do have Safe Haven baby boxes built into the designs of all four of the new fire stations. Uh, now we just gotta make sure we can take the plywood off the front of them and actually have them. Um. You bet, yes.
We do also have a policy and an accreditation requirement for infant surrender, um, cause it is a state law. So just so you know, we're on the same page with those boxes, should they ever be used to.
Yeah, no, thank you. Um, I had the opportunity to be at the League of Municipalities, again, with several of you. Um, what we are doing in this district is getting an unbelievable amount of attention statewide and regionally. Um, I mean, I think there was a lot of people that thought, yeah, it's never gonna work. It's, you know, blah, 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 blah. Um, it is working really, really well, and we're getting just a ton of questions from around the state. So again, kudos to all of our municipalities who had the courage to work through this cause you really did sort of get ahead of the game and, and lay a good fond, uh, foundation. Um, and then, um, it'll be coming out in the, in the press probably next week. Um, we received an award, uh, from the legislature. Um, it's in essence, it's referred to as a first responder of the year award. Um, but, and, and that can be around a particular event. There's quite a few law enforcement officers that are recognized, you know, throughout the year for heroic events that, that they're part of, first responders, fire and EMS. Um, the award that we got was more around, in essence, pulling off the integration in a way that, you know, every call got a response. We didn't drop the ball anywhere. It's working really well, you know, so, um, it's just kind of nice to see, uh, the district um, getting recognized legislatively, uh, for our efforts as well. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, I, I just want everyone to know that through this, through all of our discussions with the stations, Juliana, Brandon, and Jeremy have all been very active in those conversations. So if anybody asks, yes, we absolutely are including our fire and EMS members because we want them to stay with us, and we want their needs to be addressed.
We, we even had a session, the, the committee members, of which several of you were there, were not invited to, which was just for the staff. That, that they could come in, ask all the questions, the architect they wanted to ask, provide their input, um, their comments, throw darts, whatever, you know, oranges, tomatoes, whatever it was. Um, so yeah, we're, we're trying to be very, very inclusive. A little bit down the road, um, once we have final schematic designs on all four buildings, then we'll be doing exactly the same for all 10 of our municipal bodies. So that, again, the elected officials can come in, hear the whys as to why we're doing certain stuff and, um, and provide the input. We're trying to be as interactive and as precipit- precipitive, uh, participative as we can. So thank you.
I'd get one comment, Chair.
Mayor, yes.
Um, being, again, having the opportunity to work in different communities, and also being coming here and watch, observing what you have done as a group to put this together, Randy, I think is very, very adm- admirable for the group. Now, basically, you're doing as an intergovernmental agreement process. I asked also where that there is, the legislation could be or are out there. Are you folk, you got, a lot of your chiefs are looking at creating the actual opportunity to do, to really create a regional fire department, which this is becoming. And I'm just wanting you to be aware that, that I don't know where you're at, but I, I wanna know if you are part of that group that's working on that?
I, I am part of the, the executive board of the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs, and it is, it is, every year, it's at the, one of the top three in our, um, initiatives. Yeah, we've been working on it and.
I'm just kind of wondering, is it, is it moving forward or do you still have any impetus behind it? Because, uh, what you're doing here is a good example of how it should work.
It, it's not.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I, the state wrestles with funding, just like you wrestle with funding. And I'll be maybe blatantly honest with you, they are afraid of this topic. They're, they're just generally afraid to touch it because it is so big, and the need is so universal. They're afraid to touch it. Which is, which is, you know, absolutely the wrong answer, but they are.
And I, I wanna compliment you and this whole, whole organization, putting this together, not having that tool.
Yeah, I mean, we, we basically just figured out how to do it, you know, which, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, team building exercise. We all know how much I like these, and I was given no direction at all, so. I've got one.
Oh, you've got one?
Yep, stressing over it for 10 minutes. No, uh, how about we, we all pick our, our favorite childhood game, like board games? Like, not a video game, just the, I don't wanna necessarily say it has to be a board game. Mark's super excited.
Candy Land, because apparently when I was really young, I had a huge fit when I lost, and it still comes up from time to time.
Perfect.
Risk, risk. Love it.
Me, Clue. Clue.
Mine was Kick the Cam. Mine was Checkers and Chinese Checkers. It was a gift from one of my uncles. One side was checkers, the other side was the Chinese checkers.
I'm gonna mention a game you've never heard of. It was a playground game. Um, it is known in different parts of the country by a different name. Uh, but in Buffalo, New York, we called it Buck Buck. And it consisted of, um, a line of people. First guy would wrap his arms around a telephone pole or, you know, some sort of apparatus. Subsequent people would wrap themselves around, tuck their heads to the side so that you had a, a group of people all bent over. The other team then, uh, were charged with running and leaping forward. Uh, the fat guys like me jumped last because we couldn't jump all the way forward. The most athletic ones would jump first. You won if the people collapsed. And so, um, it was one of those torture games. Uh, it is known mostly, mostly in the east by a number of different names. Buck Buck is what we called it.
I didn't see that coming at all. Thank you.
I'll follow that up with Uno. Sorry, I played it relatively young, um, but Uker.
So if we're going into cards, Canasta was a family favorite, did a lot of that.
Well, I'll say Othello.
Do you guys, Othello? Have you ever heard of that?
Yeah.
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 Heard of play, that's a game.
So I had two different families. I had one grandparents that it was all TV. Had to watch my, so I had to watch Sil Bubbers every time I went down there. Um, the other grandparents, they played cards all day long and they were jumbo cards, ju, absolute jumbo cards with the little holder and everything. And so it was rummy and I loved it. Now, I don't think I could play another hand, but when I was a kid, I loved it.
Mark, Attorney Mark?
I don't think they had that back then. Oh, oh gosh. We just kind of threw sticks and stuff.
Threw sticks and stuff, that counts.
Yeah, I think it was sticks and stones is, I think is, you know.
Okay. And I'll quick go, so the, my favorite, we, the, all my cousins, we played that game where you'd shake up the little pigs and see what orientation they landed in.
Pig mania.
And they stack way more than you'd ever guess, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, it's odd, but, yeah.
No?
Okay, anybody from the audience?
I own it.
Board game or game? He liked.
That's good.
That's good.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay, we can move on now. So, uh, item fifteen.
Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, subsection one C, Wisconsin statutes considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding public works department.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous. We are in closed session.
Can't, I have show choir, all.